Welcome to the Bossier City Council Regular Meeting Tuesday, October 1st, 2019. I have the invocation by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Jeffrey. Please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day that you allowed us to see. We thank you, Lord, for the rest on last night. We thank you for those who are here. We pray for them. We pray for their family. We pray for those who serve. But we ask that you give us a servant's heart. We ask that you give us direction to do the things in this city. And, Lord, we pray for those in leadership. Father, we thank you for all your goodness and your kindness in this day. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Larkin.
Here.
Mr. Irwin, absent. Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
Need a motion to approve the minutes September 17th, the regular meeting, and dispense with the reading?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, please cast your vote. I don't have my...
Yeah, we do.
Oh, I just, yeah. Approve the agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda?
Second.
It didn't show the results for some reason.
What is it?
It didn't show the results for some reason. There we go. Okay, and approve the agenda? Who made the motion?
I did.
Second.
Oh, I need to do that, don't I? Say who first and second?
It's okay. It just takes, it just takes me a second. Anybody, I'm ready to go.
It will approve the...
All right, counsel, please cast your vote. I'm a little rusty on this. Forgive me, Mayor. All right, we have a guest here from the Bossier Parish School Board. And he's a currently appointed new member to the school board, Adam Bass. Welcome. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Adam Bass, 1055 Font Hollow, Bossier City. I just wanted to come and personally thank you guys. I had an opportunity today to attend a fire training for our students here in Bossier Parish at Medeville Elementary School. And speaking with those guys and Chief Sagon, these kids were just so involved in the puppet show. And then there's a car that comes out and tells them about fire safety. And there's a video that has a smoke detector that's teaching them all these different things. And so over the next month, which today by proclamation, Mayor Walker, thank you for that, it's Fire Safety Month. We have over 7,000 students in the elementary schools in Bossier Parish that are going to learn about fire safety thanks to this training program. And being a kid at heart, I get to play with the puppets. I got a chance to actually speak through the microphone and play the car that's going out and teaching these students about fire safety. There was a game between the students and their teachers, and the game is designed for the teachers to lose and the students to win as they learn about fire safety. It's just, it's so refreshing to know that those programs are going on. And you guys, and Mayor Walker, and Chief Sagon, you guys are providing that for our students. And I just personally, not a member, as a member of the school board, but just personally wanted to come and say thank you to you guys for providing that to our students. I think it's going to be an education program that goes on throughout the entire elementary school population throughout the whole month. So I just wanted to come and personally say thank you to you guys for allowing that training to go on for our students. So thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Appreciate you coming. You're welcome any time. All right, committee reports. Mr. Chris LaCroy with the Tacapaw Construction and update on the drainage and storm drainage and cleaning our systems out.
Thank you.
Just make sure nothing else like that's on there, huh?
That's my screen saving.
Yeah, okay.
It should be reading my...
Hopefully that's your watch, too.
Yes, sir, I can attest to that. Counsel, I appreciate the opportunity to come provide an update on our Tacapaw projects. And I promise you, when I hooked this up earlier, it was working.
If you could work it the first time, probably need to keep it, huh?
Yes, sir.
I had to change the screen for the voting, so...
I'll tell you what, let me try to go back in and start from scratch. There we go. Looks like it doesn't like when I try to go full screen. There we go. This introductory slide faded into the background. Here's a picture of our cleaning truck that you may have seen around town, working on cleaning storm drain and sewer pipe. This particular instance was, or this picture was taken early August of this year. We were cleaning sewer pipe at the intersection of Shetty Grove and Barksdale. And on the topic of sewer, a couple of quick stats. Since spring of last year, we've cleaned about 165,000 feet of pipe. And we also get called out to do some list station cleaning every now and then. I think we've been called out 70 times. Not 70 individual lift stations, just some lift stations or repeat offenders. And I wanted to provide a couple of reference pics of, or some representative samples of pictures we've seen in the sewer system. Picture on the left-hand side is an eight-inch clay sewer pipe. And you can see a utility was crossboarded through that sewer pipe. And then on the right-hand side is a picture of a plumber's tap and the pipe that is starting to become broken. Over time, that pipe will collapse. In both of these cases, especially the picture on the left, you can see the holes on the side of the pipe. That could ultimately lead to a sewer collapse and a cave-in if there's a street above that sewer pipe.
Is there any way to identify how, when, and who may have done that, or no?
Not the how and when. Whenever a contractor to go to fix that pipe, you would call a utility, a one-call out there and identify if that's a gas line or identify if that's a fiber optic cable. And then since it's, you know, obvious the sewer pipe was there first, we get that utility who, the culprit of that crossboard would come relocate that utility.
And they're spent.
Yes, sir.
And they repair.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Want to talk also about the drainage work we've been doing. Two projects in particular, Hamilton Road Drainage Project on the left-hand side of the screen and then Shed and Benton Road on the right-hand side of the screen. And those red lines just represent the areas of those two particular projects we've cleaned and televised. On the Hamilton side of things, we started just south of the water plant, worked our way down, came across East Texas, across the KCS Railroad where Hamilton Road Lift Station is, across Max Bayou, and then finished cleaning and TVing at the KCS Spur. And on the other project, we started at the Shed and Benton intersection, worked our way down and cleaned and TVed a couple hundred feet east and west at the East Texas intersection. And then again, came down and ended that project by the Bossier Ditch. Want to talk more about the Bossier Ditch here in a second, but first a few quick stats on the drainage. For both of those two projects, we cleaned a little bit over 8,700 feet of pipe from 12-inch to 4-inch pipe. And from that pipe, we've removed 250 yards of debris and dumped it at the site on the west end of Bacon Street, just north of Margaritaville. So the picture you see here, just a zoomed-in version of the slide before, that left-hand vertical line again is the Hamilton Road Project. And the right-hand, on the right-hand side of that red vertical line is the Shed-Benton Project. And when we're cleaning and TVing by the Bossier Ditch or Max Bayou area, that ditch was silted in and holding water to where we couldn't access the pipes. As part of the Hamilton Road Drainage Lift Station Project, which I'll talk about in a minute, that contractor will be mucking out the ditch. So the hopes are at that time, we'll come back, since that ditch will be restored to its original capacity. We can come back and finish cleaning and TVing the sewer or, excuse me, the drainage in that area. And on the right-hand side, the blue shaded area you see is a lot of the Shed and Benton Project drained to that blue area that there's a ditch outfall that goes into Max Bayou. And that area is, again, full of water, holding debris. So we're going to have, you know, discussion with the city about mucking out that drainage area that goes into Max Bayou to hopefully restore that to its original capacity so that we can finish cleaning and televising the lines in that area. And then the green shaded area is a separate project to where it's called Max Bayou Rehabilitation Project. We are, that part of the ditch, the concrete line ditch, is pretty damaged. So we're going to restore that concrete liner back. The survey's been done, the geotext work's been done, and we're now under design to get that ditch restored back, that concrete restored back. Couple representative pictures here on Hamilton Road. Top left is a pipe that's starting to collapse. Now, that pipe is naturally egg-shaped, so it does look a little bit worse than it is. But nevertheless, it is starting to collapse. Picture on the top right-hand side is picture when our guy stuck the camera into one of the curb inlets. You can tell that that curb inlet and that pipe was over halfway full of debris. But we've since cleaned that debris out. And the picture on the bottom shows you just one of the 30 times we've dumped at the dump site on Bacon Street. And that's what some of the debris we pulled out in just one truckload right there. Couple pics on the Shed-Benton Road area. So I like this, the top two pics just show you a before and after. Photo of what it looked like on the top left-hand side, when we stuck our camera in there just to see how much debris was in there. That's what it looked like. Then we got our cleaning nozzle out there. And the top right-hand picture is what the pipe looks like now. Bottom picture, just a couple random large objects we've pulled out of the storm drain. We washed those larger objects back to the manhole, but our truck cannot vacuum that out, just so it doesn't damage a truck. So our guys physically remove them from the structure by hand, throw them in the back of a pickup truck and go off to a dumpster. Couple other projects we've been a part of. We had a peer review for the Walter Obigby Carriageway Design. We also did a levy analysis and submitted a DOTD grant application for levy around the, for protecting the carriage subdivision. The Bossier Hotel or the Clarion Hotel is another drainage job we did where the city came out, mucked a ditch around that Swan Lake area, and then we went behind them and cleaned and TVed the drainage pipe around that hotel. Hamilton Road Drainage Lift Station kind of goes back to what I was talking about a few slides before. Contractor, starting this month, will start mucking out the Bossier Ditch around that area. And then after that, we'll be replacing the pumps and the electrical, all the controls at that lift station. Max Bayou is the other, the other green area I showed you to where, between North Circle to Benton, we're designing, or about to start designing a new, to replace the concrete liner on that ditch. And then the last project we're a part of is the Police Evidence Storage Building to where we're designing a flood protection wall around the entire perimeter of that property to protect it up to a 25-year flood. And since I showed the cleaning truck in the first picture, which cleaning truck here is in the background of this picture, there's a picture of our TV van, and that's where the guy who controlled, our TV operator who controls the camera, sits in the back of that van behind a computer with his little Playstation-type control and drives that camera up and down the pipe, getting all the video and the pictures that you've seen here. With that said, I'd like to answer any questions if there are any.
Where did you find the worst area in Bossier?
For sewer or storm drain or both?
Both.
Drainage, sewer, it's bad everywhere just because of the age. But the drainage has been very surprising. In just 8,000 feet of pipe, we filled up our truck 25 times full of debris. And I think I had on there 300 cubic yards, 250 cubic yards of debris removed. So, and that's between both Hamilton and the Shed Road area, been sometimes up to 80% full of debris in the pipe.
That's just because of runoff?
Yes, sir, because of runoff and then just lack of attention over the years. Just like everybody is now starting to, or been proactive on sewer. With all the flooding recently, drainage has become a big issue. And it's just, you know, over time, when you don't get out there and clean and TV those pipes, actually see what's happening, that the debris that's runoff in there just settles out over time. And that's what we're seeing. That's why the pipe is sometimes 80% full of debris.
I was concerned about the, I think it's Cox and Hamilton. Did you do anything there?
Cox, is that, that's north of the railroad? Yeah, I think this picture right here, let me see. That top-left picture might be close to that area now that I'm thinking about it. I don't have that field map in front of me, but yeah, if Cox Street, I think that ties into the east, from the east on Hamilton. That might be one of the pictures right there. But ultimately, we're going to, when we go back out there to finish cleaning and TVing the pipe by Max Bayou, we're going to bundle the packages together. And I'll coordinate Mr. Mark Hudson on a rehab project to fix instances like this damaged pipe right here.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chris.
Thank y'all for your time.
Great job.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Do y'all see this going forward as far as just expanding from...
Yes, sir.
...our day and just going out?
Sure, and we'll be glad to hit hotspots. I think that's what the Hamilton and Shed Road here, here's some of the worst part of drainage areas. Y'all go clean and TV it. So as those hotspots keep getting brought up, we'll go assess the...
How are those determined, the hotspots?
I don't know that. I don't know that. There might be some coordination with the city and possibly Mark.
I see some hand signals out there, yes? Mr. Netheren, Mr. Hudson, thank you all very much for identifying those hotspots for us. So, thank you, Chris.
Thank y'all.
Unfinished business?
Adopting ordinance authorizing the sale of property located at the southwest corner of Ogilvy Street and Watson Street, Bossier City, Louisiana, to Flying Heart Brewing LLC for the appraised value pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute 33:4712, final reading.
So moved. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopting ordinance appropriating $850,000 from the 2016 Sales Tax Fund to design and construct bathroom facilities and additional parking for the Field of Dreams, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopting ordinance approving an amendment to Unified Development Code creating regulations for cross-access easements, final reading.
So moved.
Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. New business?
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P-19-21 Walter Obigby Water Main Improvements.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate and the budget for this project is $5,211,227.40. There were two addendums. The first changed specs, drawings, provided questions and answers, revised the bid form, and provided the sign-in sheet to the mandatory pre-bid meeting. The second addendum made changes to the contract document, revised the bid form, and provided questions and answers. This is being funded from the 2015 LCDA bond and the Walter Obigby Carriageway Fund. The first bid is from ASB Utility Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included.
That was $2 million?
Yes, sir. The next bid is from Belt Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $3,179,024,3179024. The next bid is from J. Baird and Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $5,069,005,5069005. The next bid is from Pulli Construction. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $2,345,000,2345000. The next bid is from S&amp;J Construction Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. The next bid is from Wicker Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included.
I think we found a lot of our money that we need.
Yes, sir. And the last bid is from Yorwick Construction Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $2,855,090,2855090. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Has it popped up for everyone? Adopted zoning ordinance, first and final reading. Approved by MPC, petitioner Ryan Estes, Rayleigh and Associates, Inc. Location: Attractive Land, being lots 52, 53, and 54 of Glendale Subdivision, Unit 1, located in Section 21, Township 18 North, Range 13 West, Bossier Parish, Louisiana. Request rezone from RLD Residential Low Density to B1 Business Office for Citizens National Bank Parking Lot Expansion.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopted zoning ordinance, first and final reading. Approved by MPC, petitioner Ron Bordelon, Pan American Engineers, LLC. Request, location 2552 Airline Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for the sale of low-content alcohol for off-premise consumption at Murphy, USA.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to adopt the general fund budget for 2020.
Counsel, I'd like to make a motion, we combine these budgets, number four through...
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two? Twenty-two.
Second.
I wanted to, I wanted to ask something about the general budget before we... I don't object to the combining, but I wanted to ask, on the, I think it's the police budget. The chief is not here. Is there anyone here to represent the chief?
What's your specific question?
I was looking at the line item, the K-9 expenses. That it dropped about $6,000. So I was...
They have less K-9s than they had before. I believe they had six and now they have four. I'm not positive about the numbers, but they...
The fire department had two, the police had four.
Well, then it's three. It went down. I'm not sure of the numbers.
So they lost the K-9?
Yes, sir. I think he retired. And we didn't replace him.
Okay.
But I can get the chief to contact you for more information.
So, well, yeah, that would help. So when you lose the K-9, it's not replaced? Normally, we do.
It wasn't my decision. I assumed the chief would request one. It would be just like requesting...
Mayor, if we could just get some clarification on the policy and procedures for the police K-9s.
I think, yes, we will. We'll get you better information, more specific.
Okay. Thanks.
That's it?
Have a motion in a second to combine.
All budget items into one reading.
What's that?
All budget items into one reading.
Yes. Me, too.
Public comment.
Any questions from the audience regarding the combination? Anyway, whatever. Putting all of them together.
Combining.
Combine. Fellas got me all...
I'm so sorry.
Discombobulated?
Yeah, that's a good word, man.
I'm so sorry.
Discombobulated. I haven't heard that one in a while.
I only got four votes so far.
I have Mr. Darby is the last one.
I didn't hear.
Cast, I'm sorry. Everybody, you know what I mean? I'm getting a little discombobulated.
I apologize.
All right.
Introduce the 2020 operating in capital budgets.
I make that motion, introduce the operating in capital budgets.
Second that motion.
All-inclusive.
All-inclusive.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
We're too busy trying to figure out the computer.
Yeah, that's what's got me messed up, you know?
Your mouse down there?
What's that?
Your mouse.
Yeah, I'm used to that rather than the...
Sorry. Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to purchase and repair brush rotors in the wastewater treatment plant division at a cost of $65,000 to come from the sewer capital and contingency fund. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Public hearing for the City of Bossier City's 2020 through 2024 Consolidated Plan and CDBG Action Plan for Application for Community Development Block Grant Funds. and CDBG Action Plan for Application for Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Good afternoon, counsel. Put a copy of the consolidated plan, which is a part of this, it's a five-year consolidated plan, and it's... You can look at it if you, if you need something to help you go to sleep at night or something like that. About a hundred-and-sixty pages of stuff to keep you busy. And then, the first page in that is, uh, when you open it up, is the, the projects for this year that we proposed for the annual action plan, part of it. They're about the same projects that we had last year. We have one new project, but, uh, public services, but the amount of money we got this year was four-hundred-and-ninety-six, seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, which was a little bit more than we thought we were gonna get last year. So, every year, we apply for the same amount that we got the year before, or we prepare everything that way. And then, when we get Congress or appropriate a, a certain amount of money, and it gets divided up, you know? I know y'all have heard this before, but somebody else may be interested in it. They divide it up based on a formula and the law, and that's the amount we get. We don't really have to compete for it, but, uh, so, we assume that we're gonna get about that same amount of money this year, and that's what we prepared this for. Any questions?
Any questions?
I want to ask one thing, Mr. Brown. When you have a contractor who does the work on the rehab, is that monitored by you or someone in your office? What, what happens if they don't do what they're supposed to do?
We have an inspector that inspects that, to make sure they do what's on the, the write-up that we do.
Okay.
And then, the city inspectors also inspect it for the technical, uh, items, so... We get their approval. Sometimes people want more than what we've written down, and, you know?
Okay.
That may become an issue, but...
Right.
We have the, uh, the amount of money, a limit in there for how much we can spend, so we can't always do everything that everybody would like, so...
Yeah. Yeah, I, I did get some negative, um, feedback from, um, a resident who thought that the work done by the contractor was not up to par, and so I didn't know what, how to answer that, but it, it seems a reason that they would not, uh, deviate from standards, workmanship and that type of thing. And I, I just wondered about if they were inspected.
Yeah, the inspector checks to see that the items on the line, the write-up are done. And like I said, the city inspectors check, you know, the plumbing, electrical, and, uh, you know, those items, building requirements, so...
If I may, Mr. Darby, if you could give us a specific address, we'll go back out and have it re-inspected.
Okay.
Any other comments? Any, this is an open public hearing, is there any comments from the audience? That being said, we'll close the public hearing, thank you, Bob.
Adopt a resolution supporting the city's application to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding entitlement status under authority of Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen-seventy-four, forty-two USC, thirty-five, thirty-five D, and forty-two USC, fifty-three, oh-one, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to adopt the five-year capital projects plan, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the engagement of an employment service for the hiring of temporary contract employees for labor use for the Bozier Civic Center. For the events requiring additional manpower for any nighttime turnaround events, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing a promotion to fill vacant office manager one position in the Public Works Department and to provide for filling the vacancy created by the promotion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of one warehouse worker, two, to buyer due to retirement, and promote, promoting one part-time clerk to full-time warehouse worker, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution certifying off-system bridge compliance for 2019, 2020 for the City of Bozier City, Louisiana, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approved parade permit fee waiver for the Bozier High School Homecoming Parade, September twenty-six, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience?
So we passed.
We did it last week.
So we passed.
Oh, we did?
I made a parade.
The parade was last week. Sat on somebody's desk for a little bit too long.
This is still the fee waiver, where we can waive, the, the council can waive the fees for it?
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Glad everybody's on their toes.
Let me check any of that.
Approved report of change order number one for the water treatment plant transmission mains project for an increase of seventy thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and fifteen cents. Total of contract with increase, two million, two-hundred-and-seventy thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and fifteen cents.
So moved.
Second.
Some, could we just have an explanation of what that is, real quick? Should've saved seventy.
There's several items that were included in that particular change order. There's two work change directives, um, and within those two work change directives, there were, um, some conflicts with the sewer, sewer force main and reinforced concrete storm drain that had to be replaced, where we were tying into Hamilton Road, some clearing and grubbing, uh, that was related to the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way Phase Two portion, but we needed to clear, um, some property to put the water line in, some potholing, and, um, a couple of additional tie-ins out there.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Any other announcements? Mayor?
Just a reminder to everybody, tonight is our national night event. We've got several block parties that, and, uh, most I've seen sign up for block parties, but, uh, all the folks should be aware that there'll be areas where roads are blocked off and that sort of thing.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Anything else to be brought before the council? Night, meeting adjourned, have a great week.